And doing their best to learn in these very difficult times. In a new program that they've never seen before, they got home on some sort of device. So then going down, you can look at all of the buildings. If you start with Harlan, the average lesson time on task per student, again, it's not two hours per lesson, that's per week. Students using instruction is 122 out of 229. So the students that are engaged in that is roughly half. And the average lessons passed are 75%. So they have a very high passing rate for the students who are engaged in the reading. Then the 0 to 49%, the lowest percent is 16% and then 50 to 69% is 18. And you can go across and see the overall students completing lessons in that for those weeks. It's really heartening information because 75% passing rate out of all of those students engaged is still amazing. You take into consideration that we have, I believe, 19 or 20 families receiving paper packets who aren't even in here. So the rates go up as we go through. Lincoln has 156 students out of 246. And the average percent of lessons passed is almost 75%. It's right at 74%. Again, kudos to those students who are really working hard and doing that. And we have data for it. Again, there's a whole lot of students that we don't have data for, but the ones that are engaged in this program, they're doing really, really well. If you jump down to Salem, Salem has 79 out of 107 students. And the average passing rate is a 79%. So again, those students who are engaged in the program, they're learning something. Then Van Allen is at 123 out of 243 students with an 86% passage rate. So this is just one piece of information that talks about how hard our students and families are working at the elementary level. They're doing lots of other things. Teachers are engaging them in lots of other ways. So this is just one piece of data. You might want to say, well, why is 100% not in this? For a lot of reasons, and some of those reasons are outside of our control. But for those students, these are really good numbers and we're very proud of our families and students who are participating in that. I'm gonna roll right into the math one and then we can go ahead and see if you have any further questions. So the next one is math and this one has, for some of our buildings, a lot higher rates. So if you look at the total lessons passed, first of all, we have 545 students engaged in math. They're more connected with math because we've used this program for this whole year. So they knew how to get logged in, they knew where to go. They had testing and diagnostic testing prior to this that the system recognized. So they were a little more engaged with this. So for this one, when you look at the total number, we have 82% of our students of that 545 students who are at a 70 or above for their passing rate. So their math is connecting with them, it's something familiar and it's something they're engaged with. 12% of all of those students are at a 50 to 69% and only 6% of those students are at a 0 to 49%. So then again, you jump down to the bottom and how does that break out for our buildings? The average percentage for Harlan was 87% of those 133 students are at a 70% or higher. And only 1% are at a 0 to 49. So out of all of the students, K through 5, that means very few students are just clicking through or not understanding or really struggling with the academics in the program. Lincoln, 86% of their 169 students are at a passing rate of 70 to 100%. Jumping down to Salem, 88% and Van Allen is at 85%. So when you look at those, the familiarity of the program is really getting to our students well. Teachers have been asked to assign three lessons in math and three lessons in reading out of this program that students are asked to be engaged with each week. And wow, they're committed. There's some really significant numbers overall, especially when we know that there's a lot of things competing for their time. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
Is there something Salem is doing to get the higher percentages of participation? I mean, just looking back on reading, the students completing lessons, they're 69% versus the next batch was a 58%. And then in the math, they were again 100%. You have them, maybe most of them are at 100%, but Salem was 100% completed. Is there more communication those teachers are doing with the students or parents?
That's a really good question and I've looked at that and asked those same things. And I don't know that I have an answer other than the size is smaller, so you're working with fewer families. And those families just are keeping each other connected, whereas the other buildings, you have more families. I don't know exactly why that is. I know all of the teachers across the districts are working hard. And I know that those teachers are doing Zoom sessions or doing some sort of virtual connection. So I hope that those are those things that are paying off, but as far as Salem, they're doing a great job.
Yeah.
I will interrupt you right there. For the 6:15 public hearing on fiscal year 20 budget amendment. Can we do that if you wanna?
Yeah.
Right, is there? I just got a text that said the YouTube link is not on.
We had to update it last second. We're emailing it to Tanya right now.
Oh, okay, okay. That work? I'm sorry. We are on the public hearing, right?
Public hearing.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, so you have the documents, you have the document in your packet for the public hearing and the changes to the fiscal year 20 budget. So I'll let Ed go through that.
Yeah, again, this is for the fiscal year 20 budget we are currently in. What the state of Iowa requires you to do is if you, you have to publish your budget. This was done last April in 2019. So again, that was an estimation of what you were anticipating to spend as far as expenditures for the district. This is in the general fund only. So what the state of Iowa requires is that you go ahead and amend the budget if you anticipate going over in one of the four categories. Four categories are instruction and then support services, which is like administration, utilities, building grounds, transportation. You have non-instructional programs, which is basically food service. And then other expenditures, which the majority of that is related to debt service or paying off of contracts. You can see that the, under the instruction category and total support services, what I did was I decreased the instructional expenditures and increased the support services, basically because of a reclassification of expenditures that the state is requiring of us this year. One, and mainly that was for instructional coaches. The expenditures for those, since they did not work correctly, the students that work with our teaching staff, that went down to support services instead of under the instruction area. And then also we anticipate some additional COVID expenditures. So I didn't decrease the instruction as much as I increased the support services because I anticipate some expenditures coming out this year. The other expenditures, we have an Apple lease that we entered into for about $300,000. Again, when we put this budget together, that was, we didn't know the amount, so that was not included in there. We knew we would probably have a lease for the Apple computer lease, but we didn't know what the amount was, so of course we couldn't put it in there. And then also the timing of construction projects, which falls under the total other expenditure column. We moved some of those up, a few of those up, such as playground landscaping. And some of those projects, again, instead of putting them into next year, while we have the time and the resources we're caring about this year. And this, again, does not affect property taxes in any way. It's just basically a reassigning of resources that we already have.
Any questions, comments?
Did not receive any public comments.
No, and thank you for mentioning that, Ed. Of course, you know, we don't have many who are coming out to public meetings, but I didn't receive any comments either from anyone who wanted to comment on the budget amendment. Okay. I'll record that closed. All right, Mr. Lick.
Hey, we are quite a one-stop shop. We would love to have an eye reading program for math and reading, but we don't have one. So we measured the number of engagements our students had in Google Docs, Zoom, Google Drive and Canvas. If they're in their Google Docs, it's their school account. And I'm pretty sure they wouldn't be using that for anything other than school work because then we'd have access to it. So they probably have not done that. Zoom and Google Drive and Canvas usage. Our Canvas users went down when the governor declared that we were coming back to school. And all the grades were based on work that was due before March 13th. The kids kind of slacked off. They have picked back up after my letter that their grades would be coming due on June 2nd. They've had makeup work or things need to improve that they would need to get that done. So they have got a little more excited recently. And then our next slide is our application usage by time of day. You can see about April 16th that we took a nosedive. And then our recent guidance, it's starting to pick up again. So we were doing fairly well. We didn't tell them that it wasn't great and we just told the kids that it was work that your teacher may assign when we come back, when we get to come back. And then when we didn't get to come back, they knew we were spoofing them a little.
We got them on Saturdays and Sundays.
Yeah, they're odd little creatures. They're up all night and they work on weekends and the teachers are still eight to five in it. And I had a student email me yesterday that a teacher hadn't responded. They emailed them a couple of days ago and I talked to the teacher and they emailed them Saturday night about 6 o'clock. And a kid emailed me Sunday afternoon, so.
We, on April 30th is when the new guidance came out. Because we had been told time and time and time and time again that you couldn't open up your grade books, you couldn't put anything into the grade books because school was closed. And so that we weren't going to be able to post grades for that work until school opened again. And then it was the 30th of April, not last week, but the week before, it was on a Thursday, that they gave us the new guidance. And all of that completely changed. And so, like Todd said, we got a little bit more participation from our students. All right, Mr. Lang.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I was just going through something very similar to Todd, how we gauged the middle school engagement. So starting out, same thing with the Google Docs. We tracked that roughly over 1,900 Google Docs during this closure, the last 30 days. Zoom, you know, I like that Zoom data because part of, one thing that we did push our parents and students towards was to engage on the online learning as opposed to the hard copy. So we really, really preached that, communicated that home, that we are more than willing to send this home to you, but it's not going to be the same, not because you're not going to have the interaction with the teacher inside the classroom. And so really proud of that Zoom number, you know, hats off to our teachers. They adapted very quickly, you know, in a week's time when we were just putting resources out to parents. And then we got the go-ahead to be able to interact a little bit more with our students. They had about a week to put all this together. And, you know, so pleased with the Zoom. The instructional coaches gave us a couple of tutorials on Zoom and the teachers did weekly Zoom meetings with their students. And so with the Zooms, you know, we had about 1,600 over the 30 days that we tracked, Zoom participants at the middle school. And that is just, that's pretty incredible for the students because prior to this, the students probably weren't all that familiar with Zoom. And, you know, some teachers were and some teachers weren't. So really proud of that, Mark. And then the other one, Canvas, total engagement out of 435, approximately 435. You know, we're looking at about 375 students that got onto Canvas and were at least engaging in some learning opportunities. I won't say that every student engaged in every learning opportunity, but at some point they got onto Canvas. But we tried to make it as simple as possible for our parents and our students where they could just go to the Google Calendar on Canvas, click the calendar. And for that day, for that week, the student knew what they were supposed to be doing for those classes. So John, will you just slide down?
Yep, yep.
So this is kind of the breakdown. On this one, out of school, in school, all that is just time of day. So, you know, during the school day would be in school. And then outside of school would be weekends. And then past, I think it's 4 o'clock. So by the day, roughly about 40 students a day getting on to check what's coming up for the week and what the teachers were putting out there. And so that's just kind of across the board where we were at. We stayed pretty steady throughout, you know, you can see some days are higher than others. But a lot of times the teachers would have the initial Canvas assignments and then have follow-up Zoom meetings throughout the week. So pretty pleased with that participation. But, you know, the Canvas one is the big one because that's where the learning material was placed at. And so I'm proud of our families to be able to guide their students at home and encourage our students because, you know, as a staff, we said from the get-go, if we don't have that parental support, this isn't going to go very well. So based on the data, our parents did a great, our teachers put meaningful work out there for our students during this time. And then our parents got behind that and really, you know, helped us get their students engaged. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Katie, did you want to talk a little bit about professional development? And do you want this, you want this screen? I can give you this. Yeah, it's IT. IT's Apple too, yeah. Did it change? 5025.
Okay, so in making all of this move forward, like Mr. Lang and Mr. Lick did stated, it was a quick turnaround. So everything that we were doing face-to-face now has to be digital. And when you're a 6th through 12th grade student, you had access to a device and it was probably home with you. And you were familiar with Canvas, which made a difference. However, not 100% across the line was everything that we do every day in school loaded into Canvas. Then you compound that with K through 5 having iPads and they were doing things in the classroom with them, but that wasn't their primary way of engaging in the learning. So a matter of weeks turnaround and we flipped the switch and now we have kids learning in a digital environment without a teacher by their side. So how did they do that? There's a lot going into it and I think we're learning every day, something new to make student learning more engaging and more positive and our own comfort level as we move forward with that. I know sometimes when you talk about Zoom, if any of you have facilitated a Zoom session to try to get that to be interactive and fluid, you need a production assistant, at least I do, to be able to do that. If you're going to do things like polling and reactions and breakout rooms and all of that type of stuff, to have an engaging lesson and to have it be interactive takes some serious skill. I'm so impressed with how our teachers are putting all of this together on top of the things that they already have in their digital platforms. So one thing that, this is the secondary view of it, is a document that the instructional coaches put together to help serve and meet teacher needs overall. So this started, this is March 30th through, and it actually goes beyond April 2nd, but starting March 30th, they jumped in with every appendage possible from feet to fingertips to make sure that teachers had the opportunity to practice and play in these platforms. 30 minutes would be what they were scheduled for and they usually went around 30 minutes, but they might've gone a little bit longer. And then they started to also record these. So we now have a repository as we bring on new staff. Or heaven forbid we ever have to do this again, we have the ability to go back and revisit some of those things. So we're starting to collect what that learning looks like. So you can see Zoom, practice, Q and A, well, that's paid off. Our students have the option of connecting with their teacher in a variety of ways. Screencastify, how do I show my screen? How do I make sure I record those things? Google Hangouts, some of us had never used a Google Hangout session before or Google Meet. Because when everything is logged on with Zoom, what do you do? You go to your backup program, which is Google Hangout at this point, or Google Meet. Online learning with, within Canvas. Welcoming to Canvas. So if I was a teacher that didn't have some of those things in there, then what did I really want to do overall? So March 30th is when we started with that. And then on the far right-hand side, you can see where they filled in all of those options. Anything that you can think of, they really tried to make sure they were being supportive. So they offered those things several times. Midway through, Zoom decided to change our security protocols. Within a matter of a day or two, they had a session up for teachers to experiment and practice in a safe environment before going live with students. Even things like Google Calendar and how that can help them out. The tech in providing enrichment, they facilitated conversations with teachers about what do we need? How are your students responding? And then coming up with some things together. So it wasn't just driven from an instructional coach to the group. And before they did all of this, they made sure that they were talking to teachers, what do you need? And they were taking polls and they were taking surveys so they could figure out that comfort level of what their next step is. It was really great to watch that just-in-time teaching for what they needed to work with in the classroom. Even go down, some things I was really glad that they thought up or that someone had said something was that how can we make social emotional learning work during this time? You'll know that one of our big rocks as a district is social emotional behavioral health of our students and of our staff. And that has been just the priority of everything we do in engagement and strategies to make sure that that's being met for our students. They figured out a way to get it digitally. And so we reached out to partners like Four Oaks and Bryan Christoffersen and their expertise. And we practiced our community circles at our morning meetings before we did them with students through the digital world. So just some really great overall things that are being put out there. And again, the list, this is the entire comprehensive list and you can see as I scroll through that it's a lot of information. Everything from digital world and facilitating your content to social emotional support, both as an adult and meeting the needs of your students. I don't have the list from the elementary part, but they are working through PLCs. The elementary teachers have just been amazing in what they've resourced and grabbed onto. Lots from the math and the reading program through Curriculum and Associates, tons through the AEA. The AEA has done an amazing job putting out really good, high-quality sessions that they've registered for. And they've even figured out a way to bundle that for credit so that they have things for their license to renew. So they've attended tons of math and Google-related pieces. They've attended science, they've attended social emotional learning, tons of lists from our AEA as well. So I want to express appreciation for them. The vendors that we've worked with religiously have also stepped up. Curriculum and Associates is just one that we've worked strongly with. Really Great Reading is another one of our vendors that we work closely with and use their programs. Everybody has supported us with that and our teachers have just done a great job picking out those things that they need to support their students. So I appreciate everything that everyone has done. Any questions on what's going on?
All right. All right. Superintendent's report. Okay, go on. Let me pull this back up here. Just a few things, actually, I'm going to ask Todd to come back over and just chat a little bit about graduation and some of the things that we've planned, including graduation date and senior recognition and then our awards assembly. So Todd.
Okay, graduation. We have scheduled our graduation for the 27th of June. And we're going to graduate the kids on the 27th of June regardless. We're hoping that we can have an outdoor ceremony at Mayfair Leaf at 7:00 PM on the 27th. If we are still, if we are still social distancing, we'll bring the kids in starting at 9:00 AM. Bring them in in groups of 30. We'll have recorded the speeches from the kids and we'll have those playing on a loop in the comments. We figured we can get 30 kids and their parents in there and spread them out like we need to. And then we'll have them come in here, announce themselves, go across the stage, hand their diploma to them and then allow their parents to see them, get their diploma, take pictures and then start the next one. So that's the graduation plan, place out for June, no matter what. The plan for the award ceremony is we'll do that as a virtual ceremony on June 3rd. We haven't nailed down the exact time yet. It will be in the evening so folks can work and then attend the ceremony. Johnson's has provided us a Zoom platform that can have up to 1,000 people in the platform and you can broadcast it outside of that. So we should be able to have everyone that wants to attend that ceremony. And then this coming Sunday, when the seniors are supposed to graduate, on Friday, we're going to receive yard signs with the kids. Says, "PCHS class 2020," has a school logo, kid's first name, picture. And I'm just going to offer the kids the drive-by parade. We've asked the teachers if they want to come in the circle, spread out, have the kids coming away, goodbye or whatever. That's the day they're supposed to graduate, so we want to do something for them. The Main Street Mount Plaza, after we use the signs, the kids can either take their sign or they can let Main Street Mount Plaza take it and they're going to put it in the local businesses' windows. And then the kids can come and get it when they want it or need it for. If graduation on the 27th is going to be a drive-by, they're going to want it to announce themselves in our drive-by parade on that day.
That drive-by for the senior recognition will be out here?
Yeah. We'll start them probably as you turn down the student parking lot and then space them so we can get them around and then come out. And then you can turn right, go past teachers, wave at them, go back around the circle and drive out so we have an easy-to-do loop where nobody should be interfering with anybody else. If you're coming in, you're turning right at the student parking lot. If you're coming out, you're turning right to go past the teacher to the circle.
Thanks, Todd. All right. So just that is an update on some of the graduation things. I also wanted to give you an update, shared this with the Buildings and Grounds Committee when we met last week, but I thought that I would just kind of share with you where some things are at. As Mr. Shabel mentioned, we've been able to get an early start on some of our projects. The pickleball court construction, that contract, the actual contract itself is in new business tonight. And so I'm going to recommend to you that we approve that contract with Myers Construction. They intend to move equipment in either later this week or the first part of next week and get started on that project. You can see. You can see the list of subcontractors there. So, that is going to get started. And then I thought I'd just share with you some of the other things. Mark Porth shared with the Site Committee that they're ready to get started with the middle school bathroom project and remodeling those two downstairs, or the main floor bathrooms. As Ed mentioned, the playground borders have been ordered. And so, once those come in, they'll be, we'll be ready to start updating our playgrounds. The Van Allen Exterior Assessment Report. Actually, the Site Committee met on last Thursday. Actually, got that on Friday. And so, they, they did some of the testing on, on both the classrooms on the east side, this is inside, classrooms on the east side and some classrooms on the west side. So, what they're recommending now, after seeing some of the, the results of that report, they said they thought it would be prudent to go ahead and cut a hole in the exterior like we did on the east side in one spot, one corresponding spot to the west. And just make sure that the, the metal studs look good on that side also. So, that's the plan, that we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. The parking lot fence at Van Allen is in, looks great. We're, we received, Friday was actually the final day for receiving bids on the Salem Front Drive. So, we'll see what we have there. I have not seen the, the final bid, other than the one that we have from Bates Construction. And then, the elementary floor scrubbers have been ordered. I just, I checked with Mark today. They're actually ready to bring those on down. And they're, we're planning later this week. We take, we take possession of those and then doing some professional development for custodians on running, running those scrubbers. So, so, just an update on, on Buildings and Grounds. And then finally, in the Superintendent's Report, I just want to recognize our board members. May of 2020 is School Board Recognition Month. And I, this is my, I'm finishing my fourteenth year as a superintendent. And I can, I, I just, I can't tell you enough how much working with you folks as school board members it means to me. I have been fortunate. I have had good boards, boards that have been focused on students and have been focused on improving the school district. And, and I just appreciate you all so much in your heart for the students and your heart for Mount Pleasant Community School District. This job takes a lot of time. Most people know, there's no, there's no compensation for this job. And oftentimes, it comes with a lot of difficult decisions and, and people don't always agree with your decisions. So, I just want to tell you how much it means to me to work for you, to work for you as, as your superintendent. So, you've got your, your candy, candy bouquets there. Martha and Willie and Jennifer, I've got your candy bouquets that I will get to you.
We'll take care of them.
Yeah, oh yeah. I'll give them to you, Chuck, and then you can, you can get them too then. We'll see how far they make it. But again, thank you very much. I've, I've got some certificates for you. I'll shake your hand, give you a big hug, but. All right, and that is the Superintendent's Report.
Okay. Move on to Board Committee Reports.
The, the committee notes are in your packet there. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to try and answer them.
Any questions? Only once, only twice? Okay. Since we already went through the public hearing, we will go to consent items for personnel. Everybody had a chance to look at them. And for the open enrollment. We can take a motion for the open enrollments and personnel all at once, or we can do them separate. However, you guys would choose. There a motion out there? I'll make a motion to approve the personnel, open enrollments, and combined motion.
Second.
Ed?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mother?
Yes.
Okay, unfisish business. We'll go to fiscal year 20 budget amendment adoption.
If you don't have any other questions, I'd recommend that you approve the budget, the fiscal year 20 budget amendment.
Don't move.
Second. Ed?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mother?
Yes.
All right, new business. First reading of the recommendation to post notice of intended action, Board Policy Series 300.
Okay, so, this, this is the, we try and review three Boards, Board Policy Series each year. We started this year with 100, and we did 100, 200. And now, this is the first reading of the 300 series. I reviewed the 300 series. I went through any recommendations that the School Board Association had, has for the 300 series. The only recommendation that I have for you is in Policy Number 301.3. And that has to do with the Administrator Code of Ethics. So, you've got the current policy in your packet. Our current policy has a list of the, it says, the administrators will conduct themselves professionally. Each administrator will follow the Code of Ethics stated in this policy. And again, our current policy has a bullet list of the, the ethics and the professional manner that they would follow. Well, my recommendation would be to go to this, a revised policy. And what, what I would recommend that we do is the Iowa Board of Educational Examiners, the Iowa BOEE, that's what we call it, actually has a Code of Professional Conduct and Ethics. And I've included that in your packet. It's part of the Iowa Code. And it is, you know, all educators would come under that and are subject to the Code of Professional Conduct through the Board of Educational Examiners. And so, I would recommend that we just change the language. And it says, "Each administrator will follow the Iowa Board of Educational Examiner's Code of Professional Conduct and Ethics." And, and I include it in there that where it can be found. And then, in your, as I mentioned, in your packet is, is the actual code for your, for your information. So, that's the one recommendation. Would recommend that you approve a first reading.
Questions, comments, or discussion? If not, we'll look you for a motion. Okay.
Second.
Ed?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mother?
Yes.
Okay, consideration to approve the pickleball court construction contract.
Okay, so, I believe it was last month, we, we looked at the, the quotes for pickleball, the three quotes that we received. Myers Construction was the, was the winning quote, right about $190,000. So, you approved going, going with Myers. And now, this is the actual contract between the district and Myers Construction. We've, I've had this, had it reviewed, have the, had the, the insurance limits reviewed. And would recommend that you approve the pickleball court construction contract with Myers Construction.
Any questions or comments? Discussion? Motion? Salute.
Second.
Ed?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mother?
Yes.
Okay, consideration to approve school bus financing proposal.
Okay, and again, you, as a board, you approved the purchase of four buses a couple of months ago. And so, we went out for financing. And I'll, Ed, would you just comment a little bit on the, on the proposal?
Yeah, I did send out requests for proposals to companies or institutions we've worked with in the past for financing of buses and capital projects. The, actually, the only bid I received back was from Pilot Grove Savings Bank, which is our primary bank that we use. We do have another bus lease going with them. You can see that the interest rate that they quoted us is 2.5%. The total of the loan is $430,696, as John said, for the four buses. And it is a five-year term. So, this will actually take place in the next fiscal year, in July, when we are anticipating to receive the buses. So, that is when the loan will actually be taken out. And we'll make the first payment then of $90,445.99. And then, for four years after that. And this replaces a lease that expired, or a loan that expired this fiscal year. Again, for the financing of buses, there were, it's about the same amount, it was around $90,000. The only difference was that was for a five-year lease for five buses. And basically, this is the same amount for four buses, the next five years.
Any questions?
So, is this a lease or purchase with them?
It's actually a purchase, so we will own them now.
So, we own the buses, just paying them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion to approve the financing.
So moved.
Second. Ed?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mother?
Yes.
Okay, on to approve the central office lease agreement.
Okay, yep. So, you have in your packet, I can pull that up here also. You have in your packet the proposed central office rental agreement is really what it is. This is the same, the same terms, the same language that we are currently, of our current lease for the space that we, that we currently rent. What I, what I have talked at length with the Site Committee about this. We currently, in our office space that we have right now, the, we have a real lack of privacy issue. Because our main meeting area, our main conference room area is kind of right in the center of traffic. And certainly, through nobody's fault, but the way our, the way things are configured, we get a lot of traffic through there. And oftentimes, trying to hold a, a meeting, maybe it's a, a special education meeting that is, that has confidential conversation. Maybe it's an administrative team meeting where we're talking confidentially about some things. It's just very, very difficult to maintain the level of privacy that's necessary. And so, these offices came available just this, this early spring. And I approached Mr. Braun about, about the possibility of, of renting those. This is the same term as our current lease. So, we would, we would take these, take over these offices for June, July. And then, our current lease isn't, lease isn't in August 1st. And this would, this would be the same. So, it's $1,500 per month for the use of the office space to the west of where we currently are. I would recommend that you approve.
Any questions?
What, what are we currently paying?
We currently pay $1,945 for the suite of offices that we are in. So, this would be a little bit less per month.
Is it less square footage than what we are currently in?
That's a good question. I, I don't have the square footage right offhand. I can, I can get that for you. I would think it would be similar. Would it be similar, or is it in there?
Yep. This one, this is 2144, right?
Where, oh, 2144. Well, let's just, I can pull up that other lease.
The total will be at $3,500 a month for rent? Yes, that's what I'm getting at.
That's correct, yeah. That's, that's right. 2376 is our, the current suite of offices.
2376, you said?
Yes, that is the current offices, yes.
Have we looked into buying anything besides?
Yeah, I was, I was, was really starting to look into what our options could be to, to buy space, to try to consolidate some of our services. Central office, transportation, Buildings and Grounds, central receiving. And I had just kind of started that process right when all of the COVID-19 things started to hit. And so, either way, I think we would be a couple of years out from doing that consolidation. So, I think, I really believe this is a, is a good step to take. I, I believe it's a necessary step to take. You know, after, we're just, we're finishing our fourth year in our current office space. And you all have been there. We, we try and use that black partition to, to meet our needs. What we'll be able to do is we'll be able to, to move the homeschool assistance program and some technology storage over to the other offices. We'll be able to use that very back room, which we have used in the past when we can, for large group meetings. So, so, what I anticipate is we'll be able to, an IEP meeting, or, so a staffing, or a, or an administrative team meeting that, again, has a higher level of privacy. We'll be able to go back there, close the door, and, and have our meeting with the privacy that we really, that we really should have.
How long have been since we've had? Did we have room in our prior place for the meeting?
Yes.
We've just been working four years without privacy essentially.
I would say that's correct. Now, when I, when, when we came four years ago, we were, we were only in those offices for a few short weeks. But, there was a large conference room at the back of those offices that you could secure and, and have meetings in. Yes, in a, in a private manner. You guys are all familiar, I mean, you're, you're familiar with those offices.
I know, I just don't. $3,500 for a lease. I know, I just don't, $3,500 for a lease, we're talking about looking at building, I know one time before I joined we looked at or just talked about building out and purchasing. I guess I'd want to continue that conversation.
I'm, I agree with you, we need to find a permanent home.
I think, as John said, we had, it was back on the radar again and then the beginning of March.
Right.
Everything kind of came crumbling down and focused on.
Well, and I would say that's, that's probably a good way to put it, our focus changed, we just had a, and, and I'm not saying that we wouldn't have done this, cause I, I do, I think this is the right thing to do, again, for the short term and.
And that's why, I just don't want us to get complacent, the, oh, now we have it, let's just continue with what we have, because we've been renting for how many, what, twenty some years now or whatever, right? Thirty office space.
I've, I've been here 23 years and it was, well, well before that.
Right, right, well before that, yeah.
Well, into the process of this project based on the middle school paid off bond.
That's true, that's, that's a good point, yeah, 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 that's.
And we had a partnership with the city. Correct. We were in there before, worked out a, a, a balancing act, but the time was right, right to move on, so. Yeah. Anything else? Anyone care to make a motion? Salute.
Second.
Ed?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Monther?
Yes.
All right, looking to approve 2021 Food Service Consultant Agreement.
Okay, yep, we've, we have been using a food service consultant for the last four years. We have, the, the way we are structured, we have three PICs, they're called PICs, persons in charge over the rest of the food service workers and then we have a consultant who meets with our, with our PICs monthly to build menus according to the state standards and guidelines, to do scheduling, any of the administrative work that is done to, to make sure that our program meets the state and the federal guidelines, runs through our food, food service consultant. It's, it's been a really good relationship, she helps with hiring and person, other personnel issues, so it's been a very good, very good relationship. The, the monthly cost of $1,650 is, is the same as last year, so no increase in the cost and unless you have questions, I would recommend that you approve.
When was the last time that we, have we ever, what did we do before this agreement?
Um, the, the, well, the, the year, so five years ago, it was just the PICs and they maybe did that for a couple of years, Ed, where it was just the, that's before, before I came.
No, we, we used to have a food service manager.
Right.
A person in charge and that was even before the other people in charge and then she, last one we had resigned, I believe during the year, so it left us in kind of a tough position and the people in charge, I think, finished out the year and as well as it could and then I think the year after that is when we, what was this consultant?
If I recall, we were agreeing a, a budget reduction. Were we, were we looking to?
I, I don't, since it was food service, I'm not sure that.
Higher?
That played a major impact, it might have played some, yeah.
Any questions? Looking for a motion to approve the food service consultant agreement.
Sub move.
Second. Ed?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Monther?
Yes.
Nobody has anything else? I will adjourn.
All right, thank you everybody.